Joe, if you can hear, we're just doing a sound check. Here is okay.
I can hear you.
Thank you.
Council will call the meeting to order for the record and this Tuesday, March twenty second, two thousand and twenty-two at four thirty. We will begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Semison.
Here. Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
On tonight's agenda, under item thirteen, we duplicated a number. It should read landscape improvements at number twelve and number twenty, West Ada Street, instead of number twelve and number twelve. So with that change, Mr. Mayor, I move adoption of the agenda as corrected.
Second. The motion is second to adopt the agenda as correct is there any discussion? If not, I'll favor sing by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. You guys have it and the agenda is adopted. Next item is consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
One of the items, item seven, the final plat for a great cliff for state subdivision, we need to pull that off the consent agenda. It is waiting for some additional documentation and we'll put that on to the April fifth meeting. So with that pulled off, Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to approve.
I have a motion in a second to prove the consent agenda with item seven removed is there any discussion? If not, I'll favor sing by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. You guys have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. So next up, we will go into department commission reports, item sixteen, first item up is the police department fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget amendment, the amount of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and one dollars and looks like we have Lieutenant Harper.
Good afternoon. I have Kendall Nagy here to potentially answer any questions that you guys may have or give a little more insight into this budget amendment. So today I'm here to request that amendment, budget amendment to the FY twenty-two budget for the part-time anti-drug coalition coordinator being moved to a full-time position. It's a position we've had open now for almost fifteen months. We were trying to work on this to accomplish it, obviously before the FY twenty-two budget, but it just didn't work out at that time. So again, we're asking to increase this to a full-time position, which will be an increase of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and one dollars as an ongoing cost. I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, questions? Then do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Kendall wanted to say anything. I traveled all the way over here. I'd hate to. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I think this position is incredibly warranted and needed in our community. I'm excited to see this shift. I'm happy to make the motion that we approve the budget amendment in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and one dollars to transition the current part-time anti-drug coordinator position to a full-time position. Second motion.
I have a motion in a second. Is there discussion? The only thing I'll say is with the opioid settlement coming in, I know that there's going to be a lot of busy work to be done to help put those dollars to good use in our community and this will help achieve that goal. So I'm very happy that we were able to move forward in this direction. So with that, that's quick. Call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Perro.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries and I disagree too. And next up will be from the mayor's office and overview of the neighborhood grant kickoff efforts. Council want to introduce Molly Maidenblick, who has come on board and is now taking this program and moving it forward. So Molly, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. You got my last name correct. So good job.
I hope so.
Yeah. Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for letting me come before you and kind of give you an update on the neighborhood grants program. Like the mayor say, my name is Molly Maidenblick. I would, I would like to start out by saying thank you to Emily in legal and Diami in IT. If it were not for them, I don't think this would be where it's at, at the moment. So thank you to both of them very, very much. So the, for an update, the application is officially live. People, residents or organizations in Meridian can now start applying for this. So my big pitch at the moment is to kind of get the word out that this grant is available to people. But the kind of a timeline that we have going on is the applications will be due on May thirteenth, which is a Friday. I did not plan on that being Friday, the thirteenth. It just so happened to be that way. And so I would really like to kind of ramp up those efforts to let people know that this grant is available. So when I came on board in January, it was kind of a tight timeline to get this kind of off the ground. And so I'm happy to say that we are there, but there are some, there's more work to be done, of course. And as it's the first year, we'll probably have some hiccups that we'll be able to fix along the way. But when the applications are due, you guys, the council will be kind of deciding what the, what projects will be awarded these funds. I would like to maybe offer that parks could be a little bit involved in that as well as this, they'll probably have a lot to do with where the projects are, since it's not public land or an easement, that it'll probably be on a park or something like that. So if kind of offer that up, that they should be involved a little bit. But as there was a little, some, some changes along the way of we, just with the timeline changes that I mentioned, the applications do in May, we would like to have projects completed by September ninth. So that would be kind of a timeline that I'm looking at for, hopefully for city council after the applications are submitted to convene and hopefully award the project or projects by May nineteenth. But I'd be happy to kind of discuss this with you further, how we want to to work on that. If that's something that you guys would like to, to change, obviously I'm open to that. So I kind of wanted to give an update that just that we are live, ready to go and kind of the, the timeline. So if you have any questions, I can take them now or answer them at a later date.
Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Molly, did I hear right? The due date is May thirteenth and then the decisions will be made May nineteenth?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and President Hoagland, yes, that is kind of a tight turnaround. But yes, that was. And so I would like to offer if I could, I'd be happy to, as the applications come to me, send them along right away. So you can have the option to look at them as they come in. So it's not kind of all at once. You look at the applications. That would be totally up to, to you guys.
Mr. Mayor.
Council.
Follow up on that, Molly, because it's not only council side of thing, but if you include parks and they have things to look at. I just worry about if there's just a surge, everyone waits at the deadline and then all of a sudden you have a lot of applications, which being first year of the program, I don't anticipate, but you never know. You know, having staff with all their other work that they have going on, that where do they fit that in? That's one of my concerns. So.
Mr. Mayor, President Hoagland, I agree. And I think there's kind of some concerns were kind of expressed a little bit with parks as well, that that is kind of a tight turnaround. And so I was trying to balance that having the applicants have time to get a project done by the end of the fiscal year with, so I'm trying to be respectful of everyone's time. And I think I'm unfortunately shortchanging someone. So I'm trying to find that balance, but I'm happy to kind of make adjustment, adjustments.
And counsel, I think we can work to find something that, that makes sense. You know, a, as we move forward, it's probably a little too tight. Especially if we're talking about an award by council on a city council meeting with it being noticed and those type of things, but we can work to set up a time knowing well in advance, we can set up a, a time to have the information scored and provided back and we can work on that. We'll do our best part, but this is a little bit, you know, when in between people and wanting to get a new program off and get and try to see the benefit and value before we go into the budget session. You know, if we don't see people applying or we see a lot of people applying, it will help us, help you all determine is this the right amount for this next budget year? Should it be less? Should it be more? So that's why we definitely want to see what's, what's coming in and what's the value heading into the budget process.
Sure. Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
So is this just for individuals or do neighborhood groups and associations, homeowners associations apply and, and are you reaching out to them specifically?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman. Yes, anyone can apply kind of what the direction that I took from when I listened to the direction that Jody had taken last May, when this was approved, was we didn't really want to exclude anyone, right? Anyone could kind of. So I am looking at reaching out directly to neighborhood associations and organizations as well, but also trying to make sure that we're not excluding an individual who may want to apply, just a regular person. So, but yes, I will be reaching out to, to those as well. So.
Councilboard.
Questions. You bet. Molly, remind me, is this, is this utilizing funds from last year's, or I guess this year's budget, last summer? Oh, the applicant knows that they, they have to stay within a set window. Is this the twenty thousand dollar window? Fifty? Okay. I worry too, I guess we'll. It's one thing that might be difficult. This go around is the folks that don't apply because the quick turnaround. So two questions I'll leave you with to, I guess to chew on as part of the debrief. One would be after this is done. Would it be better to, for this type of program to have kind of that spring window, a longer review time? And then part of the decision-making based upon the applicants is funding in the summer to then do it the next year. So an applicant might have more time, maybe more willing to apply, knowing that they've got the next fiscal year to get it, the actual work done. That might encourage more participation. And then the other one is what type of vetting process, it might be helpful for the council to have, whether it's parks or a small committee or somebody review it. If there's, for example, twenty-five grand applications, it's probably not productive for us to weigh all twenty. Maybe you already have that structure set up, but two things to think about as this program evolves that at least.
Can I respond briefly, Mr. Mayor, council member? I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but I think the original plan was to kind of have this rollout last summer a little bit, but I think with staff changes, it just kind of was a little bit shortened timeline. So I think we're all on the same page. We would like to give everyone maybe a little bit more time with this. So I think that's the number one thing to kind of make a mark about for next year. And then I had a comment for your second. What was your second?
Kind of some sort of vetting committee or
Oh, yeah.
group that helps thin the herd a little bit?
Yes. So I have a couple of ideas that I would love to maybe kind of run past council with that a little bit, but for this particular year, I have developed, I have a rough draft of a rubric at the moment that I did kind of run past a few council members that I will. I gotta fix it up a little bit and I can send that out to you. So you guys can look at that before you have any projects in front of you. That would hopefully be a good starter for, for all of you, but also kind of what I mentioned, maybe Parks and Rec would probably be a great place to have somebody involved with that. And I'd be open to suggestions. Anybody else at the city that should probably be involved to help you guys make the best decisions. So. Yeah.
Yeah, if I could, my understanding was it was council's preference to be the only reviewer, determiner of all of them and not have them weeded out by others. That's the direction that I've heard. If that's not the case, we're happy to readdress that and we've got time to modify that process.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm fine with either. I have experience doing the latter as grant reviews for nonprofits and you might have fifty, even fifty applications, seventeen are they're dead from the word go. Nature of receiving applications. So.
Sure.
I'm fine if we do it, but it's the most productive thing to do.
Fair enough. Councilwoman Perro.
I appreciate Councilman Borton's thoughts on that as far as the timing of, of the next next go around, because a lot of the homeowners associations especially have their annual meetings in the, in January, February, March. And they may want to add funds to whatever grant they get to work on a project that they've had set aside. So the, if that can be done a year in advance and maybe start the applications for next year sooner. Then that may, we may get more applicants because not only do they have time to plan, but they have time to plan something bigger if they decide to do it that way. But as far as review goes, for me, I would rather they all be reviewed by you and, you know, you'll have your set of criteria. And then whoever else, I, I'm comfortable with having a committee or, or the Parks Commission or whoever's decided to review in advance. And then just get kind of a spreadsheet for us that takes all of the criteria you've decided, plugs that in, whether there's a scoring system or whatnot, and then, and then provides that to us. It's really, it would be challenging for me to read them as they came in and then try to remember and go back and reference. I'd rather just kind of have, like you said, it, you say you're doing a rubric of, yeah, I, that would be much more helpful and just do it at one time and then.
Sure.
And then go that route. So.
Councilboard.
Molly, I think it's great. My comments aren't to disrupt anything, change anything. I know it's an evolving process. We're going to learn a lot from this one. So thank you for tackling it. We'll make the best of this year.
I don't comment, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you, all of you again. Maybe I can kind of send you all an email individually, kind of gather your thoughts and then kind of compile them a little bit and see what's the best way to move forward with for this year specifically, like how to kind of score these projects and what's the best way to move forward. So if that works for all of you, I'll be reaching out to you that way. Great.
Thanks, Molly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Speaking of parks. Uh, next item on the agenda is Parks and Recreation Department fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two budget amendment for not exceed amount of two million ninety-eight thousand for Lakeview Golf Course improvements. And I'm going to turn this over to, to Mike.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We were here a couple of weeks ago with you discussing the bid results for the Lakeview, Lakeview Golf Course capital improvement projects, the irrigation system and cart paths. At that time, we gave you three options. One, two, and three, there was a variety of costs and you know, how much, how much do you want to move forward with at this time? Or do you want to do some this year or some next year? It was council's preference to move forward with option one, which included the entire irrigation system replacement, including the a new pumping system and then also concrete cart paths. And then at that time, we talked about budget and what we have in our existing budget. And if we do move forward with this, that we would need to come back with a budget amendment. That was discussed a little bit. So our existing budget right now is two point six nine million. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that came from awards contribution this year via the, the Meridian Pool Agreement. So in order to move forward with a contract for that option one, we would need a budget amendment of two thousand nine, two million, ninety-eight thousand. Got that right. It's not that cheap. And this, this is the amount that we had as a placeholder in the CFP for FY twenty-three. So if this budget amendment is approved, then that placeholder would go to zero. So with that, I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
I think it was gone from the meeting, but I did watch it and fully support all of council's decision on that option to go forward in this budget.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
All the questions, I'm happy to move that we approve the Parks and Rec Budget Amendment for two thousand and twenty-two for not to exceed amount of two million, ninety-eight thousand dollars for Lakeview Golf Course improvements.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve item eighteen. Is there any discussion? If not, call, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Perro.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries. Thank you. We'll, we'll leave you there for the next item two.
I'm up. I think I'm up next.
Item nineteen, construction contract between the City of Meridian and Lexicon Incorporated DBA Heritage Links for public works construction of Lakeview Golf Course.
Mr. Mayor and Council, now that we have the money, we are asking for your approval of a contract to Heritage Links in the amount of four million, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand or one hundred and fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars.
The, the bid results were right in line with our opinion of cost. It was about as close as you could possibly get, even though we had one bid. We we have a contractor that comes highly recommended from other golf courses and they're ready to go and, and start this June. With that, I ask for your approval or, and I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Mike, council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
Thank you. Mike, remind me, there's a contingency built in here, right? And I mean, you never know when you're going to start digging stuff up, what you're going to find, especially with irrigation. So.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perro. In addition to some Idaho power connection fees and construction administration, we have a five percent contingency on top of that in our budget. So for that unforeseen, you know, circumstance, we need to bore under some streets and dig around utilities and we just, we don't, we don't know. So, yeah.
Please, please don't hit any water and sewer lines.
We're gonna absolutely try not to.
Anybody got any salt? Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilboard.
Got the state's best procurement champion here. So I got to call him up and just anything Keith that you think we ought to know or be aware of on this.
Uh, no, like Mike said, the, the company is highly recommended. They had great references. The bid did come in right near our estimate and I think they're good to go. They have their bonds and insurance, everything ready. We're ready to roll.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Question, Keith, is it just the nature of the busyness out there that we're just?
It is. We, we actually sent it directly to five contractors that were, seemed to be interested. And I can tell you, we had an unbelievable amount, I believe. Fifteen different agencies picked up the bid and looked at it, our firms and bid, bid rooms. It got out there, got lots of advertising. Now, I didn't hear anything negative about our, the biggest thing when we get a single bid is that there's a problem with the specs and plans. There, that was not the case in this instance. We just have to assume people are busy. It's not uncommon right now to get one or none. It's tough.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perro.
Mike, what's the Parks Department's plan for public awareness, notifying neighbors in that area, notifying players season pass holders?
That's a good, great question. So we have, the golf course has a website that, that everybody's on a, on a list that if you've ever played around to golf at Lakeview, you're on a, you're on an email list. So we can send a blast out that way. We can communicate through Nextdoor. I was going to put up some project boards in the clubhouse so people could kind of get excited about the improvements. As, as we get a little farther into it, we, we can, we can have a in-person meeting every other week at the clubhouse. Yeah, in, in the morning during business hours. So if somebody has a concern or they want to meet the team, you know, we can get them involved that way. So until, well, if, if everything goes well tonight, we'll have a, well, we have the, the budget and we'll give a contract. We need to get a firm start date and then we'll put in place a good, a good communication plan to get, to keep people informed. I mean, the last thing, what we want to do is we want to be proactive and get, get that information out. We don't want to be reactive because it's way more work that way. So we'll, we'll do our best to communicate early and often.
Counsel?
Mr. Mayor? We knew when we began this process a long time ago, this was part of the initial conclusion. So I'm happy to make a motion that we approve the construction contract between the City of Meridian and Lexicon, Inc., doing business as Heritage Links for the public works construction of Lakeview Golf Course irrigation and cart paths improvements for a not to exceed amount of, oh boy, here we go, $4,379,150.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve the contract. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Gavner.
Mike, Keith, kudos to you and your team to get this moving and grooving and appreciate your help and insight. Helpful.
Really, Mayor and Council, I just, I want to let you know how Keith really pushed to get this, to go back and forth with the company and prioritize this because we were kind of in a tight window because they were going to only hold their price for 30 days. So, and Purchasing Department, Legal Department, Ted Baird really stepped up and made it happen.
Thanks, Mike, for that. That is something to point out and to keep in mind that having somebody keep their bid for 30 days is even tough right now. So I appreciate you guys acting quickly. Future bids, I think, we're running into, just to let you know, future, we're running into situations where some products, they won't even give you a price at this point. They're long lead times, big dollars, and they just, right now, our suppliers are telling us, we'll tell you what it costs when it comes in because they can't get a price from the manufacturer. It's just getting worse by the day. Just to give you a heads up, that's what we're after. So I appreciate you guys acting fast on this and letting us turn this guy loose.
Thank you, sunshine. With that, we do have a motion. Any further discussion? If not, all favor, say goodbye, say nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposing, yes, have it and contract is agreed to. With that, counsel, we reached item 20 on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move that we go into executive session for Idaho Code 74-2061D.
I have a motion of second to go into executive session. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pro.
Aye.
Gavner.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries, and we will move into executive session.
Council call them in order for the record and this Tuesday, March 22nd, 2022 at 6:00 PM. We'll begin this regular city council meeting with real call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Ho- Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simson.
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. We'd all please rise and join us in the pledge.
The pledge to the flag. States of America.
Our next item is the community invocation, which tonight will be delivered by Cindy Reese. Listen, if you all would join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection. Cindy, thank you for being here. Either one.
Our Heavenly Father, we're so grateful to be here this evening. We're grateful to live in this community. Grateful to live in this country. We ask a special blessing at this time on the parts of the world, our brothers and sisters who are involved in conflict. That they may be protected, that this will be ended soon. We ask thee, Father, to be here, that our spirit, that thy spirit will guide and direct the discussions and that good decisions will be made on behalf of the community. We're thankful for the service of those who choose to lead and we ask the blessing upon them and their families. And we say this in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next item up is adoption of the agenda.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
We do have a few changes to our agenda this evening. Item number two is going to be continued in order for the city and the applicant to update the public hearing notices. And update the project description to actually straighten the increased acreage that is involved. Also, on item three and seven, we are going to open those for the sole purpose of continuing the hearing to new date. Before we get to items four, five, and six, so we'll move seven up to like a 3A. And we'll handle both those items. And then with that, Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt the agenda with these modifications.
Second motion.
I have a motion, a second to adopt the agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. This, of course, we have anyone to sign up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did, but they indicated they wanted to speak about the item for Victory Commons and they've also signed up on that topic.
Okay, thank you very much. Well, then we we get to have another proclamation this evening for Meridian High School. So with that, we'll go ahead and go on down. And if any of the council members want to join in their garb or otherwise, feel free to come down. But if I could have the coach and the team join me at the podium, that'd be great. Just put this out there.
Hang on the podium. That'd be big for a good picture. Hang on the podium. Somebody's got to be in the front, fellas.
Well, this is this is becoming a great tradition of seeing Meridian High School come in for state championships. Not only in wrestling, but we've had some of your other sports teams here over the last couple of years. And you see, we're wearing last year's garb, so don't hold it against us. We all like it. We wear it whenever we can. It just may be a little snuggier than it was a year ago for all of us, but it's coming out the winner. That's that's what that is. So we do take, love this opportunity to congratulate our youth who were achieving highly in all things, but especially like to do it for those in their athletic achievements. And so we're going to do a proclamation. Their names, we have another proclamation that goes into the record, so their name will always be in there on that proclamation. We don't try to do it so I don't butcher everybody's name, but after we do this, love to have all the team come back, the coaches speak, how the team members come up, say their name, their weight, their gear from that standpoint, so we can get that on the record. So with that, whereas being a Meridian High School wrestler is more than scoring points, escapes, takedowns, pins, and achieving state titles. It is training to build leadership, character, confidence, teamwork, and resilience. All trades needed to succeed on the mat, in the classroom, and in the real world. And whereas after a year of adversity and injuries and not only a state title for 34 years, back-to-back state championships showed just how far the Meridian Wrestling Program has come. And whereas their hard work racked up 290.5 points, writing two individual champs, four second-place finishers, and eight more places to bring home the 2022 State Wrestling Championship Trophy. And whereas the Meridian Warriors conquered the competition for a second straight 5A state championship banner. And whereas the leadership, training, and discipline of their coaches helped all team members to focus their talents, passion, and determination to become a winning team. With each player making valuable contributions to their victory. Therefore, I Mayor Roberty Simson hereby proclaim March 22nd, 2022, 2022, as Meridian High School Wrestling State Championships Day. And the city of Meridian call upon the community to join me in congratulating the Meridian High Warriors on their remarkable athletic achievement. And for representing Meridian so proudly in the state tournament. Congratulations. Oh, she's feel like to come up, say a few words.
Howdy, everyone. Hey, there's Isaiah Twight right on time. One of our fine homeschoolers. Yeah, just really, everyone that's here was there at the state tournament. It was a it was a wild year and a wild tournament. I'm just really proud of this team and the resilience they showed. A lot of adversity overcame at the tournament. We lost a couple of kids to injuries. And yeah, they fought as a team top to bottom for those two days and definitely made some history. So just super proud of just of their grit and their toughness and really grateful for this group of kids. So, thank you.
Hello, I'm John Murray, Associate Head Coach, 149. But really proud of this group. This is a was a it was a wild ride and I'm looking forward to running it back for for a three-peat next year, but really awesome group.
Well, except if you want to come up, I also have a city Meridian pin that we'll provide to you and then we'll do a group picture after that. Sound good? All right.
All right. Carson Gouli wrestled at 195 and I'm a sophomore.
Zach Keims wrestled at 126 and I'm a senior.
Gabe Arnold, 98 pounds and a freshman.
Papa, well, Matthew Papa, 120 and I'm a sophomore.
Parker Mack wrestled 152, I'm a senior.
Judah Howie, 138, also a senior.
Mauricio Argania wrestled at 190, now I'm a sophomore.
Alex Smith, 220, and I'm a junior.
Luzzetta, 1126, I'm a junior.
Lucas here is 170, senior.
Jeremiah Gonzalez, one of the six, I'm a freshman.
Tegan Diggerson, senior, 113.
Tristan Smiley, 160, and I'm a junior.
Broden Sonata, 152, and I'm a senior.
Jason Mara, 138, and I'm a sophomore.
Hunter Ramos, I'm 145 and I'm a senior.
Isaiah Twight, 170, and I'm a junior.
Got it.
Well, Mr. Mayor, as you're getting the podium ready for our meeting time, just want to comment as alum of Meridian High School. I'm I'm looking forward to a dynasty starting right now. I think that would be awesome. We can bring these up every year. And and for the guys, I think they can still hear me out there. Remember this moment when you spoke before City Hall. Okay, remember the weight you said, because 40-plus years later, you're going to go, I weighed that? Anyway, just a piece of advice.
All right, council. So with that, first item up is item two, public hearing and finds the fact, conclusion of law for Apex West Subdivision H 2021-0087. Public hearing is still open?
Mr. Mayor. Yes, thank you, Mr. Members of the council. So in our conversation yesterday with planning and with the applicant, we realized as we resolved the issues of the land that we had discussed at the prior hearing about whether it was a parcel or the entire parcel. We reset it. We added 34 acres onto this parcel and we didn't send a new notice out. So I spoke with them, they're in agreement. We will renotice it for the April 5th meeting. That's the only glitch in this, so we just asked for a continuance to that date.
April 12th.
April 12th. Yes, you're right, April 12th, I apologize.
Council to have a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move that we continue the public hearing for H 2021-0087 to April 12th.
Second.
Have a motion, a second to continue public hearing till April 12th. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the public hearing is continued. So next up is public hearing for Eagle Crossing, H 2021-0104. This I know that this is opposing, do we open this one or do we not do anything since the posting was incorrect?
Mr. Mayor, yes, so this one, the posting was incorrect, so we can't open the public hearing, so it is just a continuance.
Okay, do we need a motion to continue it?
Yes.
Okay. No, he said we don't open it because it wasn't, that's what I was trying to figure out.
Okay. We just need to move the continue this item. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move that we continue H 2021-0104 for April 12th.
I have a motion, a second to continue the public hearing till April 12th. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the public hearing is continued till April 12th. Next up is the public hearing for Victory Commons Condominiums, SHP 2022-0002. And we'll open this public hearing with staff comments from Alan. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. So I need to do item five next or seven next? Okay, sorry. Next up is public hearing for Cooper Canary, H 2022-009.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move that we continue H 2022-0009 to April 12th.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to continue the public hearing. I have a motion, a second to continue the public hearing till April 12th. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay, the ayes have it and the hearing is continued. Now going back to item four is a public hearing for Victor Commons condominiums, SHP 2022 dash 0002. Open this public hearing with staff comments from Alan.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Alan T. from Bach Planner with City of Meridian. This is a proposal for a short plat. Property is Zoned CG located at the northeast corner of South Meridian Road and East Victory Road. Subject property contains just about a 30,000 square foot building, which is approved by CCC in 2020. The time the CCC was approved, the property was constructed on a lot that was in the Muscle Corner subdivision. Sometime after that, in June of 2020, the property is replatted as a Victory Common subdivision. First it was Lot 4, Block 1, then they did some adjustments to the lot and then it became Lot, Lot 2 of Block 2. This proposal is merely to subdivide the existing building into 10 tenant spaces. So nothing other, nothing else is happening. You would remember the second plat came in front of you a few months ago, council that you approved. Again, so this building is existing and they're just subdividing it into 10 air spaces for ownership purposes. We've deemed as being compliance. That's really it for this presentation, council.
Thank you, council. Any questions for staff? Okay, is the applicant here? Say your name and address for the record and be recognized for 15 minutes.
Yes, Mayor, Council Ton Peterson, 2775 West Navigator Suite 220 in Meridian. My name again is Ton Peterson. I'm with Ballventris Alquist. I don't need the full 15 minutes, just need a couple of minutes. It's already been stated pretty clearly. We're very appreciative of staff and their, and their help. As, as was stated, this is a final, well, before council previously dating back two years, a final plaque consisting of four commercial lots in approximately 16.74 acres in CG zoning district. This is what we refer to as Victory Commons. The phase one plat of that development was recorded in 2020 and then I think several weeks ago, but it was four weeks ago, the phase two plat came before council. That's now being routed and as stated, there's a 30,000 square foot flex building, as we call it, that will have multiple tenants who will own individual units. In that flex building on this phase one, and for that reason, we have put forth the commercial condo plat. And we're just appreciative of, of council, we're appreciative of staff. I believe Mr. Mayor was, was at the groundbreaking of this site several years ago and it's, it's amazing to see how fast it's, it's sprung up from there. So just really wanted to express appreciation on behalf of the company for the assistance that we've been provided. As well as appreciation to the surrounding neighbors. Of course, development and change is hard and we've enjoyed a dialogue with the neighbors and are always looking forward to, to find ways to, to create that continuing dialogue with them. So with that, I stand for any questions.
Council, any questions for the applicant?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's quick, everyone sign up to provide testimony.
Mr. Mayor, we had three people sign up. None indicated they wish to testify, but I believe some members of the public are here with questions.
Okay, if there's anybody that'd like to provide testimony, if you'd like to come forward now. Just come forward and if you say your name and address for the record and you'll be recognized for three minutes.
My name is Tammy Brown and I live directly behind at 2985 South Andros Way. I just became aware of this from this mailer. My questions are, is I'd like to know the height of the project and the impact of the traffic or already right now, because the tuna traffic is just, you can't even get out on Meridian without really having to really punch it to get out. So the traffic is a big impact there. I wanted to know how much more traffic this would generate. And also construction hours, what time the construction would start, how early in the mornings, the types of heavy equipment. Are there going to be lots of dirt? Because we had that nursery there before and everything around our house is filthy at all times. I wanted to know the type of construction desk. And is there going to be lots of obstructions, you know, we blocking off roads to get in and out of the, because it's, it's a big area right there. I was just wanting to know the impacts to us as neighbors.
Well, thank you. Council, any questions? Okay, is there anybody else that'd like to provide testimony on this item? Or if there's anybody online, you can use your raise your hand feature. Seeing none, would the applicant like to come and close?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Appreciative of, of I believe Ms. Brown's questions and will make myself available to provide more, more detailed information both hereafter and also can, I can meet with Ms. Brown on site to just answer any more further detail questions. On a very high level, the good news is in terms of the construction hours, this project, the, the flex building is near completion. The construction hours are, they do not exceed what's required under, under city code. And, and I can certainly provide that detail to, to Ms. Brown. And in terms of the traffic, the, the impact has been addressed through the, the traffic impact study. The existing traffic that we have now has been mitigated somewhat by a U-turn. That's been some enhancements along the existing arterial roads, including a U-turn there at Meridian, which doesn't seem like a, a big deal, but it actually is an incredible enhancement in terms of keeping the traffic flowing through that site. And so happy to provide that, that information. Again, I'll provide my, my personal contact information and can meet Ms. Brown and any other neighbors who'd like to out at site this week. The height of the project, I have Haley Hart, our associate engineer with us here today. We're checking the specifics of that, but I believe it was approved at 30, not to exceed 38 feet, and I believe it's at 32 feet is what up to the parapet. That may be off by a foot or two, but again, I can make sure I have that exact information from Ms. Brown.
Thank you, council. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
No questions. Specifically, I just wanted to say that, just to clarify that the purpose of our hearing there's here this evening is just to decide if the applicant is permitted to split this into commercial condominiums where they can individually sell. It doesn't have to do with approval of the building, building size or location. So thank you to the applicant for being willing to answer those specific questions. I hope you can connect this evening.
Thank you.
Counsel, any additional questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavan.
No questions. I, I move that we close the public hearing on number four. SHP dash 2022 dash 0002.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, the ayes have it and the public hearing is closed. Councilman Cavan.
I move we approve item four, short plat for Victory Commons condominiums, SHP dash 2022 dash 0002. As presented in the staff report on the date of March 22nd, 2022. Thanks for the ayes.
Second, second that motion.
I have a motion, a second to approve item SHP 2022 dash 0002. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavan.
Just a quick comment, me dovetailing on Councilman Pro's comments. Ms. Brown, appreciate you coming and testifying tonight. And I know it's frustrating. You get a card about a project and you want to come and learn more. This annexation was before us about a year ago and I'll tell you, council discussed height at great distance. I live one neighborhood over you off of Victory. So the impacts on, on Victory and Meridian Road were discussed at great lengths up here. And I think that the applicant has done a good job of responding to a lot of the concerns from council at that time. And I appreciate the applicant wanted to meet with you one-on-one to make sure your specific questions are addressed as well. Okay, not a problem. That's, that's why, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Councilman Cavan.
I, I know that we don't try and talk when people aren't on the record, but that's the reason why we have these meetings so the public can learn more and get their questions answered. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to call for the question.
Mr. Mayor.
The question has been called. Which, which.
I'm happy to relinquish if Councilman Pro's got some added comments or questions to address.
The question has been removed. Council one, Pearl.
Question, which question has been removed? I'm sorry.
The question, he basically called for the vote.
Oh, gotcha. Yes. I did not have any further questions. I just wanted to follow up on something that, that Councilman Cavan had stated. If you'd like to get in touch with the city clerk here, Chris, he can give you the link to the project that was originally approved and you can look at what was intended with maps and information and you might be able to also access that from our website, just so you can understand fully what's intended to happen there. Sorry about that. Thank you.
Okay, with that, let's call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Pearl.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Holden.
Aye.
All ayes motion carries and the item is agreed to. Thank you. Have a good evening. Next item up is a public hearing for Mobley Rezone, age 2021 dash 0089. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So this is a proposal to rezone from IL to OT. Property is roughly 0.16 acres in size, zoned IL. Located in south of West Broadway Avenue between Northwest 2nd and Northwest 1st, literally just a five minute walk down the street here. Okay, so the subject property is an existing vacant lot. Again, like I said, consisting of 0.16 acres, which is owned IL. Along Northwest 1st Street, I'll go to some pictures here. If you look at the picture on the right, that's Northwest 1st Street. This is predominantly single family, multifamily and duplexes. Nearly all of this is at least 50 years of age. Some of these houses actually go back longer than that. West of the property is a mixture of industrial uses, a food bank, a religious facility and residential, both single family and attached. There's actually industrial directly behind the subject property. North of the property is single family attached and multifamily. One of the properties approximately 100 feet to the north, you can see it here is actually already zoned OT. There are railroad tracks here. It's about 200 feet south of the property. And there is an alley which you can't see very well, but it borders the property and that is what you can see in that picture there. The applicant proposes to construct a duplex on the subject property once the rezon process is concluded. Although the plan does specifically mention multifamily residential over ground floor retail or office uses being part of Old Town. The property is surrounded on three sides by existing one-story residential multifamily with only a small number of industrial and non-residential uses. Although a work lives situation is possible, because the subject property is on a residential street with no commercial front, staff finds a proposed residential use in this area would be appropriate. Subject property would be alley loaded. That's again what you see here. This, the reason for this is it brings the building closer to the street and it removes garages and driveways from the front view of the house. This is consistent with the new urbanist principles where you want to have houses brought to the street, buildings brought to the street, porches, those kinds of things. And you want to de-emphasize garages. Access would occur via this alley. This is the alley here. I actually did what I call the tundra test, which is my gigantic truck and was able to get it back there to where the, if I can get my truck back there, you can land a 747 back there. So there's enough room to get in the actual, the access to the property is right on the other side of this little shed here. You can see that's the alley back there where that fence is. At present, although you can't really see it, there's a dumpster blocking the alley. That's what you see here. The way you have to get in at present because of that, that dumpster is you have to come down Broadway and then you go south on North 2nd. And then you turn and go east on Railroad Street and you, you come up into the alley here. This is a one-way street here. Staff supports the, staff supports this application and recommends approval. However, at the time, we did think there needed to be some adjustments made to the duplex. The original version, which you saw in the staff report, it showed like a combined front entrance inset for both units and there wasn't really any overhang. It didn't really, wasn't really consistent with that new urbanist principle of the front porches and that whole thing. Because it's near the downtown core improvised for Old Town, that was one of the things we thought would be an element of that. It's walkability, it's sociability, it's a sense of community. This being the first project developing in this area, we wanted to make sure that we set the right patterns for things to continue like that. That was our recommendation, recommended condition of approval at the planning commission. Since that time, the applicant has submitted revised elevations. So originally there was just an inset here. Since that time, they've put on a little porch over here. I think it's six wide by 30 long. They could probably double check. They, they could probably correct me on that. But this is sufficient size. We just wanted to make sure there was enough room to, for somebody to actually be able to sit out in front of their duplex on a summer day or even a cold day. Meridian Planning and zoning heard this item on February 3rd. At the public hearing, the commission did move to approve the subject zone request. Their only comments were that they, the planning commission wanted to make sure architectural design and materials were generally consistent with the neighborhood aesthetics, which totally makes sense. I looked at this, if you look at a lot of the, the buildings in the neighborhood and you can see them here. A lot of them are brick and clapboard siding with pissed roofs and dormers. And that was what I had originally talked to the applicant about to make sure that the architecture. We don't, we don't want to mimic the historic structures. It's one of the principles of historic preservation, but we did want it to respect the historic structures. There were a few, there were a few citizens that showed up to the hearing. The concerns they expressed were about, first of all, being two stories. They had some concerns about the alley. The alley is being used for things other than parking. Or it's, or the alley is being used for parking and the alley is being used, like they have a, an dumpster, like I said, blocking the alley. And the alley is actually a public right of way. It shouldn't be used for parking. So there were some concerns about the access occurring in the parking. Staff reminded the planning commission and the, and the citizens that you can't park in the alley. That's a public right of way. The applicant gets to have access if it's a public right of way. There were some comments about the, the area being industrial and some concerns about whether the rest of it was going to turn residential. The, the one thing I wanted to mention is there was a lot of discuss on that. There was some discussion with the planning commission and the citizens on the two-story nature of the house. And it's important to mention to you that the Old Town Zone District requires a, a building to be two stories and at least 35 feet height. You can't actually build a one-story building in OT. It has to be two stories. That's again to, to, to bribe, to bring that, that, that old town walkability and building, going, you know, allowing additional density and trying to promote commercial on the bottom and, and residential on the top. So with that, it's a very simple rezoning. I think the applicant is here this evening and with that, I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Alan. Just on that last point, I, I thought that it was single family residential or residential. Is it because it's not a single family residential? It's a duplex. It's, that there wasn't the 35 foot height requirement on all structures if they were just residential, but maybe it's because it's not a single family residential.
The, no, the Old Town recommends that, that structures be at least 35 feet high. It, it could, most of this neighborhood is all is owned in IL. The only structure right now that is, there's only one piece that's zoned OT at this point. But OT requires 35 feet height and at least two stories.
Of the, okay. Council, any questions?
It's one, it's one, the only zone district I know of really in the city where instead of saying this is your maximum height, it says this is your minimum height.
I, I knew it was a minimum, but I didn't think it applied to only residential structures.
It's, it's all structures in OT, sir.
Mr. Borden.
Real quick, Alan, does this, this has to go through a design review before it gets a permit anyway, correct?
Yes, sir. This, because this is a duplex, this is required to go through a design review.
Okay, thanks.
All right, is the applicant here this evening? Online? They might be in the waiting room.
It's being promoted to panelists right now. Just have to accept that. There it is.
If you can say your name and address for the record? All right, I can't get in and see what's going on.
I'm muted now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Carl Argon, 4515 East Copper Point Drive, Meridian, Idaho, 83642. Yeah, I'm the applicant Carl Argon. You know, we're excited to get this thing approved and through the process, we're, like Alan said, we're going to work with design review. Once it's rezoned to make it something that the city is going to. it's rezoned to make it something that the city's going to, you know, approve of and be proud of. And we're happy to set the standard for whatever else comes down that way in, in the neighborhood. So we think we'll put a good product out there and something that the neighbors and the community will enjoy. And it'll be better than a vacant piece of property that's sitting there right now, so.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for the applicant? Yes, Alan.
Just wanted to confirm. I read the UDC to make sure I was answering your, your question correctly. It is all buildings are required to be 35 feet or two stories.
Okay. All right. See no questions from counsel for the applicant? Is correctly, have anyone sent to find testimony?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, well, if there's anybody that would like to provide testimony on this item, if you'd like to come forward at this time, you'd be recognized for three minutes. Or if you're online, you raise your hand feature. See nobody who would like to provide testimony on this item? Does the applicant wish to have any final comments?
I do not.
Okay. Then with that, counsel, turn it over to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Alan, just a, a quick question for you about this dumpster. I get, I get that there's, you can't be parking in a, in an alley. Is, can a dumpster be placed there? Do we know who it belongs to? Have we communicated to the owner any? I know that maybe, it's maybe more of a code enforcement question, but because you, you brought it up, I'm coming to you first.
Sorry, Mr. Counselperson, Mr. Mayor. I do not. If you look down the alley here, you can see the green dumpster here. That, the reason why I found that is because I was going to try to drive down this alley, and I couldn't do it. I think that's the, the food bank there. No, you can't put a dumpster in the alley. That, nobody's complained because nobody's really gone back there, and nobody's developed. But you can't park in the alley. You can't put a dumpster in the alley. It's a public right-of-way. It, it would be a code enforcement issue if we wanted it to be.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
We have Representative of the Meridian Food Bank here. Maybe they can shed some light on that since they're in the area.
I'm happy to take public testimony since we're not there, and we can give the applicant time to respond afterwards, so. You say your name and address for the record, please?
Dan Clark, Meridian Food Bank. No way. What's addressed?
Food Bank is fine.
33 West Broadway Avenue, Meridian. The purpose of the dumpster, dumpster belongs to, puts it out there all the days of pickup. And then picks it up, empties it, and then comes over to the food bank. That dumpster is only, they're pushed out there like on Wednesday morning. That's, that's.
Counsel, any questions? Thank you. Hearing that, would the applicant like any final comments?
Yes, I would like to make some comments. You guys can hear me, right?
Yep.
I, I had to go out there to post that, the sign for the public hearing notice for city council and planning and zoning. Each time I went out there during the week nights, the dumpster was not there. I also went back to take down my sign after planning and zoning commission. On a weekend, the dumpster was not there. So I'm not very concerned about the dumpster. It doesn't seem like it's a permanent thing. That car wasn't also blocking the alley as well. So I'm thinking maybe Alan just, it was just luck that you saw it there the way it was. But each time I've gone out there, it hasn't been that way, so.
Thank you. Counsel one, Perrow.
Question for Alan. Alan, on page 10 of the staff report, it shows a boundary map, and then, of course, there's a new legal that was recorded recently. Is this overlapping two existing parcels? Is this going to be divided into two parcels separately? Or is this going to stay on the one parcel as it is?
Thank you, Counselperson Perrow, member that's of the council. It is confusing. It does look like two parcels. It is actually one. The, I, I know that's what it looks like on the, and I had the same question to Bill Parsons, and we researched it for whatever reasons it's showing it too. But it is actually, the record of it shows to be one parcel. It's going to be one duplex on one parcel.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I move that we close the public hearing for H 2021-0089.
Second.
A motion second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The public hearing is closed.
Mayor, just a comment before I make a motion.
Councilman Holton.
It, it's exciting to see a vacant lot in Old Town being built upon and have some life to it. And I think it's a good thing, as, as we learned about minimums for Old Town and two stories. So that was enlightening. So I, I would move approval of, after all, after considering all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to approve H 2021-0089 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of March 22nd, 2022.
Second.
Have a motion as second to approve item H 2021-0089. Is there any discussion? If not, court, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Perrow.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Hi.
Borton.
Hi.
Holton.
Hi.
All eyes motion carries and the item is agreed to. So our next item is a public hearing that was continued from January 11th, 2022 for H 2021-0027. We will continue this public hearing with any comments from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Not going to go through the whole thing again, because I think we've all heard this very many times. Just, just so you know what you called on last week's episode, I hope you get caught up. Property is, this is for an annexation rezoning in conditional use. Property is located southeast intersection of North Meridian, East Blue Heron Drive. It's six properties, five of them that are already in the city, one of them is not. This is what you see here, R1 in the county. The purpose of this, there is now five apartment buildings with 108 units. They want to build two new apartment buildings on this R1-zoned lot and 32 new units. A conditional use was approved for the original complex in 2013. We had an app, a pre-op. The applicant, again, wanted to build 36 more units in two buildings. This was initially heard by the council on October 12th. Since this time, it's been continued a few times. It most recently came on December 7th, and again, was then continued to this date. The, the issue has been parking, particularly the issue with parking overflow onto East Blue Heron Lane, and the impacts on the residents of the Heron Brook townhouses to the north. Also, the council's requested the applicant to justify the number of spaces they're proposing, and looking at some of the parking information that might be provided from the property management company. So this was the original proposal that you saw that came in front of you originally. All what's grayed out is existing, and this was one building, this was the other building. And obviously, the rest is parking. There was an open space here, 70 by 100. Since the last council, the applicant has resubmitted new drawings. First of all, the, so what you're seeing here that's different is that this building G has now been moved up to the East Blue Heron Lane, and this park has been moved to the, down towards middle. Part of the reason why they did that is because people have a tendency to want to walk to the building where, to park where the building is closest. And if you move the building up toward the street and widen the parking lot, which is what you see over there, it will help to incentivize people to park in the lot in front of their buildings. Since, since the time of the council hearing, there's been a couple of other things that the applicant has done. The applicant indicates, let me see here. Okay, so with phase one, there was 108 apartments in five buildings. The required 204 parking spaces, and they, with phase one, provided 207 parking spaces. With, let me close this little window. It's in my way here. Okay, so phase two is, again, is 36 apartments and two buildings. Their required parking is 69. They've got a certain number of covered parking, and their, their provided parking is 89. So what they've done, they've, they've done a few things differently between the last time and this time. The first thing is that 35 of those stalls, they've made them larger. The, the city, City of Meridian requires nine feet long by 19 feet long for a parking space. In this particular case, they're doing 11 by 20. They're saying that this is to satisfy some of the larger trucks, like for instance, my Tundra. I think that the thing that is more important is, one of the significant issues that they've had is they have all these covered garages in the original phase. And though, not cover, sorry, um, fully enclosed garages with a garage door. And what the problem has been, not with just, not with these apartments, but a lot of different apartments, is that people tend to use those garages for storage, and then they park their cars somewhere else. So all those parking spaces are basically useless in the garage. If you remember, our recommendation with phase two, because of the parking issue, is that we, we proposed to you and to the planning commission that only carports would be allowed in this development, because it would keep people from storing things in their garages and parking elsewhere. The applicant with this proposal is, his, is now suggesting to take the garage doors off of the existing garages in phase one, all of them, and basically only allow carports in the entire development. Again, with the idea that all of that storage that used to be in the garage would now have to go under their apartments, or they'd have to get rid of it, and parking will be used for cars. It's, it's a lot easier to enforce whether or not you're parking in your garage, if you can look into the garage and make sure that they're not full of stuff. The other thing is they've talked to fire department and ACHD, and they are proposing to put no parking on the north side of East Blue Heron. The neighbors across the street have had concerns with cars parked all along that side of the road, parked along near the corner, so you can't see when they're trying to pull out a Meridian. So they're proposing to stripe East Blue Heron Road. So again, the differences are larger, 35 of the parking spaces will fit a Toyota Tundra. They are proposing to make all of the garages carports, and they are proposing to stripe the north side of East Blue Heron Drive. And with that, I think that is everything on my presentation. I, I talked a little, I mean, I kind of went back and rehashed on what our recommendations are. They, they meet all the requirements, which is why we recommend approval. In fact, they exceed the requirements. The applicant is going to have to widen the pathway between East Blue Heron Lane and North Erika. There's a, a lateral pathway there now, and they're going to widen it so that they have a secondary emergency access only for the fire department. There would be posts or something like that, so people can't drive there. We had concerns with all the condenser units for the AC being along the front of the building. We thought it would be a little more aesthetically pleasing if they at least had to soften them up with landscaping. And, and then again, as I said, covered parking shall only be provided by carports. And if the council was supportive of what the applicant is, is suggesting, then you would probably want to add a condition of approval that the existing carports in phase one be convert, or sorry, the existing enclosed garages in phase one be converted to carports, which again, would keep you from storing all your stuff in the garage, I hope. With that, I have no other comments.
Thank you, Alan. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel one, Perrow.
Thank you. Alan, did, did they, the, the parking spaces that are, that have been widened and lengthened, did they actually, like, re-stripe and adds, or they're going to re-stripe and add some in different areas of the entire complex of phase one? Or is it just all added into this east side in phase two? So that, that doesn't really solve our problem, because we're still going to have people that live way on the west side of the development, and they're not going to park their larger truck way on the east side just because the spot is bigger?
What I'm seeing, Counselperson Perrow, members of the council, and I very well could be wrong, I'll probably leave that to the applicant, because I wasn't prepared for that question. What I'm seeing are showing the larger parking spaces down here on the east. Certainly, you are privy to tell them to re-stripe however you'd like.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
Alan, for the no parking on the East Blue Heron north side of that, is that something they have to go through ACHD to accomplish and get approval? Or can we condition that as well?
I'm sorry, one more time, Mr.?
For the north side, they're proposing to make that no parking. It was a previous discussion we had about to help reduce impact to the residents on the north.
Correct.
Side, that they would make that a no parking area on that north side. Is that, though, up to ACHD to make that determination?
Ultimately, it would be ACHD, but my understanding is ACHD was supportive of that. I believe Joe Bonjorno might have had some discussion with them, I'll, for sure. But yes, it's ultimately their right-of-way. So they get to decide. My understanding was they did not like the idea of both sides of it being striped. So yes, ACHD ultimately would be the one that would decide. So you could, you could condition this, and they could say no.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Just before, maybe we jump into the public hearing portion or the presentation of the applicant, I just wanted to notate for the record while I was here for the initial presentation. I did miss the continuance in December. I watched it online and followed through on the minutes. Phil prepared to be involved in the conversation tonight.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions for staff? Is the applicant here this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I, this is Chris. I have Mr. Powell as the applicant. I've unmuted him, but I see Misty Stelludo as well, so I'm going to, I'm not sure who's representing the applicant.
Hello, this is Miss Stills, Stelludo. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, I'm representing the applicants, Heron Village Apartments. I'm with Dave Evans Construction. Tamara Thompson with Land Group is unavailable tonight. We have Rob Powell, our architect with Dave Evans, available as well as Summer Hazen, who is the management, with the management company for Heron Village. I want to thank you all for seeing our application again, and we look forward to bringing this forward one more step for approval. As Alan was saying, with our option I, which is that newest site plan that you all see right there, that does provide wider stalls as well as relocating the open space. And touching with the wider stall option, we are providing 16 stalls that are nine foot by 20, which is greater than code requires, and then those 35 stalls that are 11 by 20. And to address a question that one of the council members asked earlier about re-striping phase one, that is going to not be very possible due to the fact that the carport post spacing has determined the spacing of the carport stalls. And so unless, you know, the, the carports are redesigned and redone, we're not able to re-stripe those. We believe that making those garages deluxe carports by removing the garage doors, that will help greatly with allowing more residents to be parking closer to building E and D, since they can just pull in and pull out. They don't, we've got a garage door, plus they won't be able to use those for storage as well. A thing to take note of is the property management has done a lot of things to figure out why the parking situation is the way that it is. They've done numerous audits throughout the, the last couple of months. Dave Evans Construction has done audits onsite the last couple of weeks, as well as doing tenant questionnaires that really see why the tenants are parking where they're parking. And it was determined that, the audit determined that there's plenty of parking internally for everybody to have a spot and to park. But the tenant questionnaires provided was those stalls are just either inconvenient or they're not large enough for the vehicles that they do have. And so property management's practices then needed to be changed to also make parking within the community more convenient. And so what the, the property management company has decided to do was make all in community parking free of charge. So the garages are going to be free. All the covered and uncovered parking stalls are free. They've also given one garage space to every three-bedroom unit free of charge, and so that's a huge difference from before. And then they are still continuing to educate residents of using the garages for parking. Now, we are proposing to remove those overhead garage doors, which will, like I said, create those deluxe carports, which will make additional parking a lot easier to park within the community. But in the meantime, before that's been approved, they are having those garages free of charge and educating the residences. With our option I, like I stated, we are providing larger stalls. Now, they are not centrally located like in phase one, so people with larger vehicles will have to walk a little ways. But still, we're providing ample, larger parking stalls for those larger vehicles to park. And we are not proposing any more garages. And we are not proposing any more garages. And the only cover parking stalls that we are going to provide is what code requires. Everything else is going to be uncovered, which will also help curb that issue with the larger taller vehicles not being able to park under those carports. Regarding the no parking along East Blue Heron, that definitely is something that we are willing to work with ACHD and the city about. We have learned with our discussions with ACHD that that is something that needs to be brought up by the city and the city needs to, to request that from ACHD. We have to be on board with it as well. And that will only allow ACHD to go and uh, do like a study to see if no parking is actually warranted on East Blue Heron. That doesn't, that doesn't say that they're going to approve it or they're going to, they're going to stripe it or, or sign it, no parking. That just allows them to do the study since ACHD feels that East Blue Heron was constructed and designed for parking on both sides of the street. They're really hesitant to, to not allow that to happen because that's why that road was designed the way that it was. But we are more than, we're more than happy to cooperate with, with you and ACHD to get that study going to see if, if, if the no parking is even possible from ACHD's perspective. We do agree that uh, at least no parking should be on that uh, north and south side, just west of, I'm sorry, just east of Meridian Road, west of North Richter Lane. That will definitely help with uh, the fire department's concerns with that visual triangle being blocked with all those cars. So we're definitely on board with that as well. Uh, we, we feel that uh, the option I that we're showing now does provide those larger stalls. It provides the open space that's more central to both phases, being able to use that park-like setting. It's going to have benches. We're proposing to have barbecue areas. We're also proposing to have thirty-six covered bike, uh, bike, covered bike stall areas for the whole entire complex to use. And we feel that uh, this is just a really great project to help with the housing problem that Meridian's having. It's going to uh, fulfill the city's vision of the comprehensive plan and the future land use plan. And uh, we respect your approval and I'll stand with questions.
Thank you. Counsel, questions for the applicant? Counsel, one, Pearl.
Thank you, Misty. Um, could we bring up the map with all of the buildings for the whole development?
Does that work for you?
Um, no, I think there was one where you can see them. They're grayed out, but yeah, there we go. So one of the reasons why this has been continued and we've, we've asked the applicant to go down this, this process was to try to get um, vehicles off of Blue Heron Lane. And so I just wanted, uh, Misty, if she could share with us, if, if there are vehicles that belong to tenants in building E and building D that have, that, that need to use the, the larger parking stalls. I, I'm not sure that this actually solves them not parking on Blue Heron. So would you share with us thoughts on, on that? Cause I, I think that they're just going to park in those spots that are closest to their building. And I really appreciate the, the larger stalls. I, I think it's a fantastic idea. I just think placing them, and I understand what you're saying about how the striping is done in relationship to the carports and how things are spaced. Um, I just not sure that it accomplishes the whole, you know, one of the main reasons that we've gone through this process, the way we have, which is to get them off of the street. I, I think that they'll likely still park on the street if they live in those more northeast uh, buildings.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman, I understand your question about the, the parking for building E and D. With removing those overhead garage doors in the garages along Meridian Road, that will, that will provide a little bit more headroom than the carports would. So we're hoping that some of those vehicles can park in those garages. As far as um, the vehicles parking along East Blue Heron Lane, again, that's something that's legal for them to do and we cannot legally stop them from parking it. We are going to provide every opportunity for them to park within the community and we will provide them those larger stalls and encourage them to park over, you know, it's not that far of a walk if you've, if you've been in this complex before. It's not that big of a walk. It's a couple, maybe two minute walk or whatever. Um, and we will encourage them to use those stalls versus parking on the road. But we simply can't force them to not park on the road when it's simply legal for them to do so. Um, but we are hoping with those garage doors being removed, that that will encourage those larger vehicles to be able to, to park in there.
Counsel, any additional questions? The applicant? Okay, thank you very much. This is a court. Do we have anyone sign up to write testimony?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we do. James Michael Schwert.
You say your name and address for the record and be recognized for three minutes.
James Michael Schwert, uh, two forty-five Blue Heron Lane. Uh, what, what, what happens is even they'll, they'll park on the south side and then they come down to the Meridian Meat Packers and they, they, they make their U-turn in my retail area to go back down the, the south side. And I, I don't know what the fix is, but they're just going to tear up our loading dock and then our retail area. The U-turns right there. Cause they, especially if they close the south, the north side, because they'll just come, they'll, they'll park on the south side. And then they'll come down to where the, our plan is and turn to head out to Meridian Road.
Counsel.
I don't know what the fix is on that either. So if there is one.
Counsel, any questions? Maybe in the, maybe, maybe later is what I, is what I'm saying. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Mr. Mayor, two others sign up online, but they're members of the applicant team. So I'm not sure how you'd like to treat that.
Well, in, in the past, when they've done that, we've, if they're testifying on their own behalf, we're happy to take them. Is there, but I'll start with any of us in the audience that'd like to provide testimony on this item? Okay, seeing them. Now let's check in with those that signed up in advance and see if they, if there's anybody online that would like to provide testimony, please use the raise your hand feature. Okay, seeing no one wishing to provide additional testimony. Um, would the applicant like to make any final comments?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, counsel, I assume we'll leave this open for conversation.
Good idea, Mr. Mayor. And I have a question for Chief, Chief Bonjourno. Chief, for, we're talking about vision triangles and, and whatnot. And I was trying to remember from last time we had the discussion. Can you go through, was, were we concerned about Richter, which is part of that uh, East Waterbury Lane connected there, right closest to Meridian Road? Was it both the north and south side that we had concerns about fire trucks and having that vision? Or was it also farther down? Can you refresh my memory on that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, Counselman Hoagland, I think the, excuse me, I think the issue was cars parking too close to the corner. And then I believe on one of the directions, there's actually a fire hydrant sitting there as well. So that was the issue. So, um, I did contact John Watson with ACHD and I asked him if they would be willing to sign from Richter to the corner as no parking. Um, because of the fire hydrant being there and because of traffic and not being able to see up and down Meridian Road. Um, honestly, I never got an answer back from him. Um, we also discussed, um, Blue Heron, and I think we talked about this at the last meeting as well. Blue Heron, I believe is a thirty-three foot roadway section, which is a standard roadway section for ACHD. And I believe it was the mayor that even asked me, are you comfortable driving a fire engine down it? And the answer is yes, because that's our standard roadway width that we see here in Meridian is thirty-three feet. And we allow parking on both sides. So we're, I'm okay with leaving Blue Heron uh, as no parking. It, that would be completely counsel's call and ACHD's call uh, to not allow parking on the north side, but I am okay with it.
Mr. Mayor, follow up?
That's been hog on.
Yeah, chief, for that no parking in, in the view area, um, was that both from Richter to Meridian Road? Was that both north and south side?
Correct, both sides. I asked for both sides to be signed.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Hoagland.
Another question. I don't know if some of the residents there off of Waterbury Lane are here. But uh, I, I'm just curious about, you know, we talk about no parking on the other side, on the north side up against that, that, that community. But is, does that mess them up when people come to visit for, for example? So, or it looks like from, I'm looking at Google Earth has, you know, plenty of parking and it's a wide street and, and different things like that. They have covered parking. So I was, I was just curious, you know, sometimes we take action and then find out, oh, that didn't help things. We made it worse. So we want to avoid that. So I didn't know if one of you would like to comment about that. I'll let the mayor invite you to come up and give your name and address for the record.
You've invited them. That's okay.
Hi, I'm Sandra Rogers and I live at one oh-two East Waterbury Lane, which is off, right off Blue Heron, Richter and East Waterbury. Yes, and we have overflow parking. But a lot of times we have people from the apartment complex that have parked in our overflow parking. And there's no way for us to tell who's parking in it. I mean, unless you see somebody, if you actually see somebody park in it and go to the apartment, we can't confront anybody. So um, as far as parking on East Blue Heron, a lot, I can't say a lot. But I do believe there are quite a few that are parking there that are sharing apartments with people that are on the lease. Now, these are people that aren't on the lease. And they're sharing apartments because a lot of these people are young and they can't afford the rent. I mean, even when both of them are working and if they have a child, they just absolutely can't afford the amount of rent anymore. And so they've got friends and whatever, whoever living with them. And that's got to be some of those cars that are on East Blue Heron. So I know at a previous meeting, we talked about from Meridian Road on both sides of East Blue Heron down to the driveways. And one would be Richter and one would be the street coming and going that in, into the entrance of the first apartment complex. Blocking those off with either red on the curbing or signs. And I thought it was okayed. Um, I mean, I thought everybody was on board with that at the time, so I don't know where that stands now. Am I understanding this no parking on the north side of East um, Blue Heron is just to allow a study? Or is this going to be a done deal?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Hoagland.
Yeah, we, we don't have the jurisdiction over the streets, so we would make recommendations. So it would be Ada County Highway District that would do this study. What we're looking at, and I think everyone's in agreement in it is, in listening to Deputy Chief Bonjourno, is no parking from Richter to Meridian Road on both the north and south side because of the view that, that you need when you're exiting.
Right. It, it blocks our view terribly, get coming in and out. I'm surprised there hasn't been an accident there.
So I, I don't think that's the in question. I, I could be wrong. But my question then from Richter up to where you can enter Waterbury, a little bit further to the east to come in that way on the north side or up against the, your residences there. Does that need to be no parking on just that north side to help alleviate traffic? I'm also thinking, is, is that a way to allow U-turns? People who park on the south side then, that can then have enough room to make a U-turn. So they're not going farther to the east, going through this gentleman's property to turn around.
I understand what he's saying. I've seen a lot of that. Yeah. Um, no, if, if this doesn't work out, um, no parking on the, on the one side like they're talking about. Um, we definitely need that done on East Blue Heron on both sides. Up from Meridian Road up to the driveways of the apartment complex and Richter on the other end. So that we can see, I mean, and um, just because we have rules and regulations, these people still don't abide by them. I mean, I could be calling code enforcement every day. I don't, but I do when it's a real issue. But big trucks park right up to our driveways. And we have to get way out into the street to see if we can even get out to make a turn, to get out onto Meridian Road. It's, you know, we've got older people that live in there. So um, it's a bad issue.
Sure. Well, I appreciate you and the information you provided. Thank you for doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Cavan.
Would you mind a couple of other questions? I'm just.
Oh, not at all.
One, I, I appreciate you and your neighbors, I think, came and made some very compelling arguments back, I think in September. The, the council is very sympathetic. So here we are now, uh, looking at April, I guess on the, on the hills of April. We've seen a lot of different revisions and I was, I was a little bummed that neither three of you came up to testify one way or another about what's being proposed. And I'm just kind of curious, where are you and your neighbors at on, on what's being proposed? Do you think it, it meets or addresses the concerns that you, you brought up in September? Do you think it makes it worse? Is it slightly better, but not what you fully had hoped to see? I mean, just, I, I'd like to get a little bit of feedback from you about what's being proposed, if you're willing to share.
Well, after tonight, there is only three of us here. We have thirty-four units out there, plus a clubhouse. And um, I think they've been very good about accommodating what we've talked about. So um, of course, parking, parking and traffic was the main issue. And um, we have fire trucks and ambulances out there all too frequently. And so that's a big deal that they can, I mean, I find it hard to believe what he's saying with cars parked on both sides of East Blue Heron and a fire truck. He would know, but going down there and coming back, I, I don't know. It's got to be a tight squeeze.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Cavan.
I think that's probably why they don't let you and I drive those trucks is because I think it'd be tough to do that too. So I, I appreciate your feedback. Thank you for justifying tonight.
Thank you for your help, all of you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, one, Pearl.
So I just wanted to say, if I remember correctly, um, the members of the public had come before us in the first hearing and asked to stripe the north, the entire north side from Meridian Road to Waterbury uh, because they thought that would alleviate um, concerns about people driving through Waterbury Lane and turning around, which I, I believe was, is a private lane. And so that was a request that was originally made from the public, which is why we started down the conversation about it. And then meeting two is when um, Chief Bonjourno had mentioned that it wasn't necessary for the, the width of a fire truck. So we kind of left it there. And um, so I just, it's hard to say because I don't, we're very thankful that, that you're here, but just, you know, if, it, it's tough to make a decision about whether we ask the applicant to stripe that whole section on the north side. Um, just not having any kind of, you know, I'm, I'm hesitant to condition that, I guess. Considering that we have no, no say in it and, and it's just a preference, maybe? So I guess what I'm trying to determine if this is a preference or there really is a safety issue.
Give my two cents unless I'm forgetting. I, I guess I never really looked at this dead end turnaround factor. I mean, that, that, the only, as far as I can see, the only way you can ever prevent people from driving and trying to turn around is to have no parking on both north and south and forcing people into the two places to do their parking. Otherwise, there's no way to solve anybody, the only, only one way they're getting on either one of those sides of the roads is is making a turn somehow that is not viewpoint. So, you know, the, it, in, in some, in some regards, I think that's a question that counsel should consider is what is the, you know, what, there is no turning, yeah, I asked, look at the chief and fire chief again. It's like, how do you guys turn around? If, if, if you need to go to that next house that's currently there, you can't turn left on Waterbury. I mean, it's not your preference to go into someone else's property to, to turn your vehicle around, but that's what you're going to do, I assume. Is that fair to the property owner?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we'd probably, like you said, we would pull, at least pull into the driveway and then, you know, back out and, and come down. You know, it, it's exactly what they're saying.
So, so there, there is that element for consideration on, on both sides. The other part about this is um, The other part about this is, you know, I have, have a nice shiny new vehicle that I just received. It doesn't deserve a 11 by 20-foot lot, but I would park my car there even though it doesn't require if it's closer to where, where I want. So while we may think we're solving, you can't guarantee. And we, I appreciate what the applicant is trying to accomplish, but we can't force, they can, you know, you can go down to the parking lots in Boise and they say compact only. People park where they want to park, when, when they want to park. Yeah, Alan's, Alan's Tundra. You know, and they'll park in alleyways apparently when they want to as well. So I think these are all good ways of trying to address it, but I don't, this is just an area that's trying to retrofit challenges that anything that is done is gonna have some repercussions one way or the other. And I don't think that we'll know which, what will be until things occur. So I'm just pondering. So no real questions at this point in time if we want to have more
Mr. Mayor?
Comments?
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, those, those are good ponderings because that's definitely what we're wrestling with. Because if, if you take away parking on the north side, in my mind, because that, between Richter and going east, does that put more pressure on their guest parking lot because people go, oh, that's open, I'm just gonna park there? As opposed to leaving that with parking on the north side? It's, it's one of those conundrums. I mean, I have no problem going from Richter, as Deputy Chief pointed out, on both the north and south side. And then I think, okay, maybe we allow parking both ways. And then have ACHD also examine ways to have no parking and bring that in at least one or two car lengths at each intersection so you have better viewing. So when you pull out, you can see better instead of having to go clear out. But then, Mayor, you, you make a very good point. If you have no parking on both sides, you don't have to make a U-turn. You know, come up the street because you don't have to. You don't have to swing around to go to the north side or if you park on the south side, you're gonna have to do a U-turn later on. So, you know, all these things, that, that balance. I think overall, just kind of so the applicant has, has some idea what we're pondering, for me anyway, is they've, they've made lots of changes. I think they've asked everything that we asked them to, to do. They've come up with some solutions for increasing parking and trying to regulate parking and keep people in compliance. And without this expansion, they don't have to do any of that. I mean, it's just gonna remain the way it is. So it's, it's one of those things, I think we can bring about benefits with approval, more benefits than we can without. But it's just a matter of how do we, how do we solve some of those on-street parking issues that, that actually work?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh.
I know Christie's on the call, I was, maybe we can bring her in and I guess maybe my question would be is, kind of given her expertise, she's been following this project, if she's got any recommendations for council to include in our motion and conditions, should we move towards approval that maybe, us not being the subject matter experts, but the highway district being that, that, that we can maybe address some of these concerns in the most efficient manner possible?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, sorry. You guys are so small on my screen. I think that's Cavanagh. I did go through and I did converse back and forth with some of our DTS staff on some of these issues and we certainly, our traffic has that request from the fire department to look at the north and south side from Richter out to Meridian Road. And they're definitely, that is in their queue to analyze that, to see if there are some sight distance issues with those two driveways and potentially putting some no parking there. The street is and will be with, if this is approved, 36 feet wide back at curve to back at curve, which is a standard local for us. I don't know how we can address the turnaround issues at the end of the roadway. It is our right-of-way, but given that it's an off-site, we can't require them to place a turnaround there. And I know that there was a request to expand the pathway on the, the right-of-way out to Eureka to 12 feet for an emergency access for the fire department. So that may help with some of that. And yes, the, all of those drive, all of those drive aisles on the north side on that development are all private. So we have no jurisdiction over those. But our, the local roads are wide enough for parking on both sides. And if the fire department says it, it's not needed, that they can traverse that roadway, I think it really can, kind of comes down to the turnaround, which we don't have any authorization to require with this development. I don't know that that really answers your questions, but we also certainly would work with the city if they request no parking on one side or the other. We certainly, that would be analyzed by our traffic department, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cavanagh.
Christie, could we also include, you know, like a request for a sign like a dead-end or no outlet?
Oh, for sure. Yeah.
Be sympathetic to Mr. Schwartz's concerns about, you know, apartment traffic or drive-through traffic, turning around in his parking lot. And I don't know if that solves it, but I think would maybe at least reduce some of that.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, that would be part of the traffic analysis that they would look at. They can, they can include that for the no parking. They can look at appropriate signage to notify drivers that this is not a through street.
So looking at you Deputy Chief, i- if Mr. Schwartz decided to put a fence up on his property line, what would that do and mean for, for me or Sam? I'm not putting words in his mouth, but I, I couldn't, you know, it, it's a possibility that there's no access turnaround. And how does that impact the fire department if that was the case?
Mr. Mayor, I was actually just looking at the map to see if Ada County could put some kind of a turnaround in. But unfortunately, down at the end, past the Meridian Meatpackers, there is the drainage ditch. And that's kind of the big problem with this whole road, why it just stops is because of that ditch. So, I mean, the, the solution is to push it through to Eureka. I believe the right-of-way is there. Again, we'd have to go back with ACHD and see what their thoughts are of actually programming it to, to put that last 500 feet in and just make it a through road. But to answer your question, if he were to put a fence up, our only solution, if we had to go down to Meridian Meatpackers for a call, some kind of an incident, the only option would be to back all the way down to Waterbury or the, the apartment entrance that they potentially will be building here, which obviously for us, backing is a problem. That's why we have turnaround requirements and stuff because we don't want to back because it's inherently dangerous. Firefighters die every year from being backed over by their own fire apparatus. So, I mean, the best solution is to push the road through. The second best would be to try and come up with some kind of a turnaround in that area. But again, with the ditch, it, it kind of, we're, this is just one of those bad spots.
Sorry to take us down that road, literally, but just, unfortunately, this application is bringing up too, too many other issues that are in this area that we may or may not be able to solve. Yes, Alan?
Alan, just to add to what Mr. Bonjourno said real quick. The, the issue though, and I think this is already being discussed, is there's infrastructure there, right? There's utility poles and all those things that, that's gonna make it extremely difficult and costly to widen that. It's not just a matter of widening and it's moving all of the utility poles. So you're not just working with ACHD, you're working with utility providers. So that's quite a beast. And you, you, yeah, and it's, it starts getting difficult to, to, to require an applicant to make off-site improvements that aren't on their property. The applicant is being nice enough because they're trying to accommodate the impacts, that's saying they're going to widen it. But, but I, I might leave that to Mr. Neri, but we're gonna start delving into places we don't want to go if we start requiring off-site improvements as a, as a, as a request, as a, as a requirement.
Alan, I don't think I've heard anyone talk about off-site improvements. I think we're just talking about the impacts of the road and what were to occur if things were to happen and how that should impact parking on that road.
Understood.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hoagland.
Question for Christie. Christie, for, I'm, I'm looking at East Blue Heron from Richter to Waterbury. And I, I know you guys have safety, safety standards for, you know, site views at these corners, triangles. How far back do you keep people from parking from the intersection? Say of Richter and then Waterbury on that north side. Is it 20 feet? Is it 30 feet? How, how far back do you keep vehicles so there's, when someone pulls up to turn out, they at least have a decent view down the street?
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Hoagland. It depends on the type of roadway and what we're talking about. Our standard for like an intersection for a local to local or a local to another street is typically 40 feet. So you follow the curb line and it's 40 feet back on either area and then you kind of draw a connecting line between the two to create that triangle. So it's typically 40 by 40 on, for sight distance issues. If it's a driveway, those generally will narrow to like a 20 by 20. But the maximum is, is 40 by 40. And then I just wanted to follow up with that connection to Eureka. It, it just to kind of piggyback on what your staff had talked about with connecting that roadway. That is something that the city could add to their request because it is a local roadway connection to their community programs request to the city or to Ada County Highway District. There is that difficulty with those utilities and with the canal. And we would have to acquire right-of-way to do that because then right-of-way does narrow down to about 35 feet from where that pathway is currently located. So we actually don't have sufficient right-of-way to finish the road out unless we were able to acquire some additional.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hoagland.
Follow-up with Christie on that 40 feet. Is that typically posted? I, I can't tell from the map I'm looking at if that's posted, no parking, or is it striped of in some way?
Count, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hoagland. Typically, we would put some no parking for the 40, 40 by 40 if it's requested. And I don't, I don't know if there's existing signage out there now, but if there isn't that, I can make that request of our traffic to include that as part of their analysis to make sure that there are those signage to keep people out of the sight distance window.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Pearl.
I also have a, a question for Christie and then would like a follow-up comment from Deputy Chief Bonjourno about the letter that was put in the project folder today from ACHD and, and just mentioning that the Meridian Fire Department had had concerns. I don't know if that, those have been addressed and that letter was just sort of late to us, but the conversations had already been had. It, it didn't, I guess the letter seems like it's way past when we, you know, when the two entities would have had the discussion, so.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilmember Perrault. Are you talking about the letter from ACHD dated August 25th, 2021?
I apologize. It's an email that our staff uploaded to our site. And I don't know, let me look at the date. Do you have a copy of it?
I may have it in front of me. We'll see. I have lots in front of me. There's one from back in October and then, where's the other one at? Apologies. I have a small desk at home, not nearly as much room. And then there's one from March 22nd.
Yes, that one.
Okay. Yes, that's one that Mindy included me on as well from our DTS department. Yeah, so in essence, what she's saying is if the city of Meridian, if the fire and emergency services have an issue with access on Blue Heron with parking on there, we would work with them to address those issues and evaluate whether, to put up no parking signs in conjunction with those, with your fire department. So I was just going off of what Fire Marshal Bonjourno said had, that he was fine, he was able to get down that road with the parking. But if that's not the case, then we absolutely would work with the city of Meridian on some no parking.
Councilman Borton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good discussion. I guess just as we wrap this up and get towards a motion, I think, Councilman Hoagland's remarks are spot on with where I see this application. It's, the continuances have made it better. They've gotten as close to, in my mind, solving difficult challenges within the bounds of what this application can, can control and solve. There's, there's trade-offs, I think, quite frankly, with each iteration of this application. But with the conditions of approval and concessions made by the applicant, I'm supportive of this application as presented.
Would the applicant like to make any final comments since we did take comments from the public in the form of a question?
Yes, I just wanted to reiterate that we are in favor of working with ACHD and the fire department to get that study conducted to see if no parking is warranted. And we're also in favor of the no parking west of Richter on both the north and the south side. We also wanted to reiterate that the garage solution of removing those doors will provide larger spaces for those larger vehicles to be parking in as well as all parking within the complex is now free and part of, just part of the rent now. And so that's a huge incentive to park inside as well. And we would approve, we'd appreciate your approval of this application.
Thank you. So counsel, I'm gonna make a suggestion for your consideration or discussion with ACHD is potentially to look at only allowing parking in the area on the street between the two entrances for the, both sides of the street on the north and the south, in hopes that you could encourage people to use the, quite frankly, the, the U-turn option there at the Waterbury area. So we are not forcing people or enabling people to park further down and push them to have to turn around in, I know they're both private. One's a private drive, one's a private property. But, you know, part of me would like to suggest like no parking at all on the street, but I think that pushes when people have a few people over, it pushes on where they're gonna park. Then, then you are 100% forcing neighbors to park over in the apartments or neighbors to park over in the other side of the street. You need to have some parking in that area. Otherwise, Albertson, I mean, how far away? There's no good place to park outside of this area. Ultimately, it's gonna be ACHD's call, but I, I, I think trying to look at ways to not push people there or down further than outside of where the residents are, quite frankly, is kind of where I was trying to suggest consideration.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Hoagland.
Yeah, that's, that's where I landed as well. With, with interest in ACHD studying the set back, the safety zones for Richter and Waterbury at the 40 feet and possible signing for, make it easier for those residents. And also at Waterbury, if you've got that 40-foot no parking area, that's clear. I, hopefully it would encourage people to do that U-turn there and, and not have obstruction of people parking right up to the intersection and having some room to do that turn and still allowing parking on that north side to help alleviate, I hope, parking within that residence area and, and allowing people to, to utilize that. So that, that's where I fell as well on that, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Pearl.
If I heard Christie correctly, a lot of these are dependent on the city making these requests and they're, they're independent of this application. So the, the signs for 40, 40 feet from the intersections and I guess, I don't, I don't, I didn't quite understand if the connection to Eureka was allowed to be a condition of this or if that is also a request that the city has to make independent of this application. But what I'm still trying to connect, connect the dots on is how can we, can we condition the application on anything that ACH does with, ACHD does with us? In other words, we, we say, this, you can move forward with this if ACHD does A, B, and C. I don't, are we permitted to do that? And that's probably a question for Alan.
Thank you, Councilperson Pearl, members of the council. In regard to the connection first to Eureka, I think my understanding was ACHD was amenable to that. I believe that, that Mr. Bonjourno has already had some discussions with them. So that, that's a, I don't want to use the word done deal, but they're amenable to that. In regard to the rest, it would just be a
In regard to the rest, it would just be a matter of staff requesting that ACHD do a study of that area to see if there could be some kind of better parking management with no parking. But yeah, you can't condition it. You could condition it with the suggestion from the council that staff in ACHD or that ACHD and the applicant and staff explore whether areas in that area could be striped no parking.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I think it sounds like we're all in agreement that there definitely needs to be no parking between Meridian Road and Richter on north, north or south side. But but am I hearing Alan correctly that we also cannot condition that?
Councilperson Pearl, I'm extremely reluctant to condition something on what a different agency is going to do. Especially they haven't even done a parking study, and I have no idea if ACHD would be supportive. So they may. They may say no, and then we're back here, I suppose.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bonjourno.
Thank you, Chief. Mayor Che is gonna call you chief. Chief. Just clarification. So that connection to Eureka is the emergency access only. I want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you.
The pathway is there. All I asked it was can they widen it to where I could drive a fire truck down it just in case we had to? So what I was talking about earlier that Christie had already talked about was actually pushing the whole road through eventually. And that's something that I think she said we would have to request. So I just want to make sure we were clear that the connection is just that emergency access only.
You know, and from my standpoint, you know, to me, it's just good for the applicants to hear the changes that we the city would be looking for from our partner agency so they understand what this is. You know, it's kind of interesting that daylighted some issues that have been there. But this hopefully helps address larger issues altogether. But yeah, that part in my viewpoint, I won't make the motion, but not part of the application. With that, do you have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Move that we close the public hearing on H 2021 dash 0027.
Second.
Have a motion of second to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. The ayes have it. The public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
Just to kick off discussion and make sure we're all on the same page. We've covered a lot of ground tonight and it's been a good discussion. But it it sounds like a condition that we could includes include is that the existing enclosed garages be converted to carports. So I think we can do that. Make that as a condition that we would request ACHD study no parking on the south and north side of East Blue Heron Drive from Meridian Road to North Richter and entrance to the the first entrance to the development. And also including that request ACHD take a look at possibly posting signage after a site distance analysis done at the intersections of East Richter and Waterbury. We have safety margins in place there. And I think that's all I had. Is there anything else that the council is interested in?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
After hearing all staff applicant and public testimony, I move to approve H 2021 dash 0027 as presented in the staff report for the hearing date of March 22, 2022 with the following modifications that we condition that the existing enclosed garages be converted to carports. That we request ACHD to consider no parking on the north and south side of East Blue Heron Drive between Meridian Road and North Richter and the first entrance to the development. And that they look at possibly putting in no parking signage for the site distance analysis at East Richter and Waterbury Lane for safety reasons. And that would cover all that in my motion.
I and I move for approval of that. Find out where I was.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Is there a discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Appreciate the the work of the applicant. I think they've been really responsive to the public testimony and the feedback of the council. I also just want to take a minute. I always appreciate when members of our public go through the marathon sessions of planning and zoning commission and city council meetings with lots of continuances. Your intestinal fortitude is noted and appreciated, and I appreciate your your public testimony here tonight. I I originally was pretty opposed to this project and think Councilmember Hogan or Borton put it best that this has been a a good example of taking multiple bites of the apple to make sure that we get it right. And I think this is as as right as we're gonna get on this particular project. So I'm I'm supportive of it.
Any further discussion from council? And call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pearl.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hogan.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Thank you. Counsel, last item for us this evening is ordinance number A 19 dash 1812. Ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an amended ordinance related to H 2017 0142 Summertown for annexation of a parcel of land located in Government Lot 2 of Section 1 Township 3 North, Range 1 West, Boise, Meridian, Ada County, Idaho. As described in Attachment A, in annexing certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, and adjacent contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Meridian as requested by the city of Meridian. Established determining the land use zoning classification of 15.17 acres of land from RUT to TNR, traditional neighborhood residential zoning district in the Meridian City Code. Providing that copies of this ordinance shall be filed with the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder, and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you, counsel. You've heard this ordinance read by title. Is there a bay that like it redness in entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Pearl.
I move that we approve ordinance number, is it A dash 191812? With suspension of rules.
Let's take in the motion.
I have a motion of second to prove ordinance number A 19 dash 1812. Is there a discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pearl.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hogan.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. The ordinance is agreed to. Counsel, anything under future meeting topics? All right, then do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, move to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. We are adjourned.
You were unmuted, Brad, or we were muted by that time.